Five forty-five. It's five forty-five there. Five forty-five. Hello?
I'm with you all.
We can't hear City Hall.
Yeah, City Hall is muted.
Thanks, Monica. I couldn't figure out what was going on.
Anybody hear me?
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, sounds good. All right, we had some, a technical glitch here. So we're gonna get started. Joel Harton is on Zoom here with us and we're gonna let him start it off.
Hi, Joe. Hello, everybody. Good to see you all. Sorry, I can't be there in person. So coming to you from the basement office here in Charlotte, North Carolina. And today we're gonna talk about the Health Insurance Committee and our deliberations this year and recommendations for the health insurance program for the city for 2021. So in terms of an agenda, a little bit of background on the committee, just as a reminder for folks. Talk about about market trends because it certainly has been quite a year from that perspective. And that has impacted your plans experience, which, you know, to the good, interestingly enough. Go through the RFP process, Request for Proposal process, that the that the city underwent this year and give you the results of that. And then what that looks like in terms of our plans for for 2021. So ultimately, I want to get you to the to the conclusion, which is the committee's recommendations for you, which will be on the agenda later this evening. So in terms of the committee, most of you recall, just kind of a reminder that the city has used a health insurance committee process for quite some time, twenty-five years or so. And the idea here is for folks to have a better understanding of, you know, what that health insurance program really, really represents and how it benefits the the city and and the employees and the dependents. And then to go back and to, you know, work with their their coworkers, their bargaining groups, et cetera, to, you know, get questions, bring them forward, and then express opinions about the health insurance program. And your committee earned their earned their keep this year, did a lot. You'll see when we talk through the RFP process. We spent an awful lot of time on on some, you know, pretty important issues and and came up with a, I think, a good recommendation for you to consider tonight. And that's really, that's really the, at the end of the day, what we're looking to, what we're looking to do with this group. And they did a very nice job. Had two meetings, one in May, one in August. Did them both, you know, remotely and but good dialogue, a lot of discussion and a lot of great ideas. All right, so in terms of market trends, you know, if you'd asked me this, you know, this time last year, and I think some of you did ask me this time last year, you know, what do we, what do we expect in terms of health insurance? We expected a couple of things. We expected first, sort of not any major change in healthcare cost trends as we looked at, you know, kind of going into 2020 from 2019. And that, you know, in the lower single digits, really. And we also didn't expect to see much from a legislative perspective, you know, with Congress kind of jockeying before an election and things of that. Didn't expect to see, you know, much in in the way of activity. Well, part of that panned out, right? The lack of activity, at least on the core sort of health insurance law, there was not much going on that way. But we had this, you know, this little thing called COVID, and that had huge impacts. So if we go on to the next one. What we've seen, interestingly enough, is for most employer plans like you, we've seen a short-term reduction in medical costs, really related around the whole reduction of elective procedures. Right? So if you think about, if you think about how COVID has hit and and kind of who it's impacted, you know, it's it's really, in many respects, kind of spared the employed population by and large. Now, I'm, you know, look, I I understand that, you know, there have been folks many different ages who've gotten, you know, COVID-19, and and that's certainly an issue. But in terms of overall costs, employer plans really haven't been hurt that much. And in fact, the the reduction in elective procedures and the reduction in cost of elective procedures has far outweighed, you know, the cost of any, you know, COVID-related procedures, either the testing or the treatment, and those were our cases that really, that really, you know, needed to happen. So that's a piece that you'll see here when we talk about the city's experience because your your claims experience ran very much true to this story. But then the bigger picture is some of the broader trends that that the COVID-19 change kind of brought about. And, you know, I think many of you heard and saw certainly back in the spring, you know, the the sort of changes in benefit coverage that kind of came out pretty quickly around, you know, virtual care and telehealth. And, you know, helping folks get first dollar telemedicine when they have a high deductible plan like like you sponsor for folks. And really, I think we've been, you know, we've been talking about telemedicine for a number of years in front of this group, and the committee's been discussing it. And we've been doing things at the city level for the for the health plan to to sort of encourage telemedicine. Well, this is, this is the year that telemedicine took about a fifteen-year leap forward. And, you know, certainly didn't want that to happen, but that's been one of the major byproducts. I think it's safe to say that the way people receive medical care will never be the same again, right? I think there's, there's now sort of an unstoppable wave toward the whole idea of telehealth. Many people who never would have thought of doing that in the past are certainly are doing it now, have seen that they can get, you know, certain things diagnosed, you know, online or via their phone or what have you, and they're gonna keep, they're gonna keep doing that. And that's gonna have major implications down the roads for the brick and mortar sort of provision of medicine. Other things that went on, another big, big impact is what we believe will be, you know, a major impact in sort of behavioral health, right? This has certainly been a stressful time. And I think employers have understood now that the importance of behavioral health and how how that impacts, you know, and life outside of work, and that that can have some costs and cost implications down the road. So so things along those lines are definitely going to, are gonna be a bigger deal. And I won't talk about all the bits on the slide because you can read faster than I can talk. But, you know, one of the financial considerations that we do have is, you know, what does this mean sort of down the road? So sure, yeah, we're having a a nice reduction in costs this year. That's great. That will probably, honestly, our actuaries believe that that will go into next year as well. But is there going to be an impact on some of those, you know, some things that maybe would have been diagnosed earlier or started to be treated earlier, you know, in in the three-year, five-year, ten-year kind of time horizon? And certainly something that that we're gonna have to keep our eyes on and keep watching. So how the city do, how, you know, how have we been doing? So you'll recall that we have three plans that we offer to employees here at the city, the green, the red, and the purple. All of them are high deductible plans under the US tax code so that folks can put dollars into a health savings account if they wish to do so. Certainly are not forced to do so, but they can. All these plans are eligible for that. And just some differences in the in the deductibles and and coinsurance, as you see here. And then one big difference, the Purple Plan, as we've discussed before, is a more limited network option. So the Purple Plan provides coverage in-network for, you know, Gunderson and Winona Health providers and and many other providers as well. But Mayo Health providers are are non-network in the Purple Plan. And, you know, that's been, that's been the case for several years, ever since the Purple Plan came around, and we communicated each year. And as we go to the next slide, you'll see that despite that, we have by far and away, most of the enrollment in the city's plans is in that Purple Plan. And this is, this is really not changed from the year that we rolled out the Purple Plan. It is the the least expensive to the employees in terms of their cost share. But and and folks have have seen that, and they have gone into the Purple Plan in a big way. In terms of the group, it's in group dynamics. Actually, this is kind of interesting in terms of the way the city's plan has shifted over the years. If you kind of look at where the, you know, where the generations are down at the bottom here, you see, you know, that that you are now a majority millennial organization. That's the biggest group of the of the three or the four that we're tracking. And, you know, between millennials and Gen X, you know, fully seventy-five percent of your employees kind of fall in that in in those cohorts. And then twenty-five percent baby boomers. And Gen Z still kind of, we'll see them soon enough, they'll be along, but but not many of them at this point. The plan data up on the top right gives you a little bit of a snapshot of the folks that are in these various plans. With the Purple Plan having so many of your employees, that's the one that's probably the most, you know, representative in terms of average age and so forth, but it does have the youngest group. It does have the the highest participation of of women in the plan. And the average tenure sort of mirrors the city as a whole. So I I sort of let it slip earlier that, you know, from a cost perspective, you know, we're we're doing, you know, quite well. But here's, here's a good way to think about this. I think we've shown this the past couple of years. This is our dashboard where we try to capture a lot of different metrics of the plan all in all in one place. But if you want just a quick and easy way to see how you're doing, can just look at the speedometer at the top middle, you know, right there, where you want to be in the green and and you're you're green, you're you're clearly green. And that fifty-eight percent basically means that that is your cost as a percentage of budget. And when we talk about budget, we talk about those rates that we showed on the prior slide or two slides ago, which, which, you know, both the city share and the employee share together. If we put those together, that's the, that's the budget for the health plan per se. And that's what we look at at the beginning of the year, and we try to, we try to hit that budget, right? We try not to, you know, I go way over, we, because that would require more funding from the city. We don't really want to go terribly under. But we also know that being a self-funded plan as you are, you're gonna have some some spikes, right? You're gonna have some some years where you do better and some years that you do worse. And this year, you've done, you know, quite a bit better. And we attribute a a fair bit of that to this reduction. In some cases, elimination, but certainly over the past few months, a bit of a reduction in those elective procedures, people just not feeling comfortable. In some cases, providers not even being able to sort of provide them or or do them. But, you know, this, this is kind of where we stand. And you see a little bit of up and down movement on the top right and what we call the mountain slide, kind of comparing each month's claims to budget. But you've, you've, you've really been fairly fairly stable. One thing I will, I will point out is in the middle left, you see the numbers in the red there, stop-loss reimbursements. We, we have one very large claimant this year, almost a million dollars. But because of the stop-loss insurance that we've talked about in the past, the Blue Cross provides, we were only charged, the city was only charged a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of that overall bill. So the stop-loss insurance policy picked up at this point nearly a million dollars. There may be, you know, some more charges coming kind of through the year. But, you know, at this point, quite a large percentage of that cost was was paid for by that stop-loss insurance policy. So but for that, we would have been in a much different situation from a cost perspective. But we plan for this. We, this is why we buy stop-loss insurance. It's why we think about it every year and make sure that we, you know, have the city's risk kind of covered on on the top end. So if we go on to the next slide, a lot of numbers here. And don't mean to, you know, we're not gonna look at everyone or every, you know, column or or every row. But what we are, what I do want to kind of call your attention to is the the right two columns. First one is, you know, July year-to-date, and that gives you kind of the the idea of where we were from a from that dashboard perspective that we talked about earlier, where expenses are about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in premium, or budget is a million two. And then if we project that out to the end of the year, how's that look for us? It looks pretty good, right? So, you know, we don't expect any more large claims. They may come. Certainly not, you know, certainly don't know of of any out there, but, you know, that that could happen. But we haven't budgeted for them per se. We have just budgeted for sort of a normal historical calendarization of of your claims through the balance of the year. And if all that happens, which it won't happen to the, to exactly like like we're showing here, but if it happens in this order of magnitude, you know, what we'll end up with on a budget of about two-point-one million dollars, we'll have total expenses of about a million five, just just a little bit more than that. So so a good year, as a matter of fact, a great year to to be self-funded. You see that back in 2019, we we did, you know, well as well, if you can say it that way. Whereas in 2018, we had expenses that exceeded the budget or the premium. And that's, that's the the give and take of self-funding. But I can tell you that being self-funded puts you in a position in 2020 to have this kind of a, have this kind of a year. Because if you had been fully insured, you just would have paid the premium, and that would have been the end of it. So just something to consider for when we talk just in a minute about some of the results from a marketing perspective. So just a final note here on on the large claims on this page. Again, right now, we are historically low in terms of large claims. We've actually, the claim that we're, the one claim that we're dealing with is, you know, about as big as any claim that I can recall the city, you know, somebody at the city ever having. But again, good thing we had the stop-loss insurance to keep our 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 losses to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for that, you know, for that particular claim. But as you see, the claim's over fifty thousand dollars on the, you know, the farthest left column there. Historically, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to ten of these claims. And so far this year, we've had one. We expect to have, you know, some more by the end of the year. People, you know, do tend to, you know, charges build up through the year. But we're we're doing fairly well historically, and we certainly don't seem to think that we're gonna be at the, you know, eight to ten level by the end of the year. It might be three or four, something of those in that magnitude. And then just a couple of thoughts about kind of where claims are coming from or whether they're being paid, right? So this, this chart here compares on the top half professional services, which would be services provided by a physician, physician assistant, things of that kind. Whereas in facility services are hospital-provided services and physician services that are billed through the hospital, right? So kind of separating those two. And what we've tried to do here is capture the the entities that are providing most services for your employees. And so if you take a look at 2019 versus 2018, Gunderson provides the lion's share of services, both professional and facility services, followed by Mayo and then Winona Health after that. So those are your three main providers. By far and away, the others had data that was, you know, so limited that it doesn't even really, you know, hit this chart. But it's certainly something to keep in mind and something that the committee kept in mind when we went out and started looking at alternative providers, which we're we're gonna talk about in a minute. Matter of fact, we're gonna talk about it right now because this is the RFP process. So let's talk just briefly about how that went and what what we, what we, what was revealed by that activity. So we sent out a request for proposals to seven different medical vendors. Five of them provided proposals and two declined, quote. We also advertised the RFP in the, you know, in the newspaper as a public record, and no one asked for specifications through that process. So we're pretty, you know, we're confident that we got the the major providers in in the marketplace. We received proposals from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Your Incumbent, Medica, the Southeast Service Cooperative, the PE, PEIP, the Public Employees Insurance Plan, and then Quartz Health, which is the entity that provides insurance programs that really focus around the Gunderson, the Gunderson, the healthcare network. So after we got those proposals in, we, we, we did an initial analysis and sifted through them. The PEIP and then the Quartz Health proposals, big change to what the city is currently offering. And we, I can speak to them, but, you know, when we went through them with the committee, everyone agreed that, you know, certainly intriguing, but, you know, very, very different and and shockingly so in some, in some cases, from what the city employees are used to. And we decided not to, not to push them further. Not a huge, you know, guaranteed cost savings to to go that way. And it just, it didn't, it didn't feel like something the city wanted to approach at this time. Medica and Blue Cross both offered fully insured proposals. Those weren't as competitive as others. And so we, we pretty quickly moved on from there. And we got down to really three that we looked at in, in, you know, some level of detail. Self-funded proposal from Blue Cross, Your, Your Incumbent, a self-funded proposal from Medica, and then a fully insured proposal throughout, through the Southeast Service Cooperative. So if we think about the the two self-funded proposals first, right? So the Blue, Blue Cross came in basically duplicating their current arrangements. So self-funded with a full network, like you've got in the green and the red plans, which would include Mayo, and then an alternate high-value network, which is effectively their new way of 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 providing the Purple Plan benefits. So effectively, without getting in too much inside baseball, what's going on here is Blue Cross has the the network configuration that's been used for the Purple Plan in the past has been changed slightly for on a nationwide basis. And so they've provided additional discounts and some incentives to move to this high-value network. It means nothing in the Winona area, in the southeast Minnesota area. All the providers that were in that prior network are still in the new high-value network. And the the changes are really more on a national scope, other parts of Minnesota and so on. The stop-loss Blue Cross would continue to provide. They continue to have the same pharmacy provider that they've always had. So very much a duplication of your current benefits in in nearly all respects. Medica has a a national program, which they call Choice Passport, which would include Winona, Winona Health, Gunderson, and Mayo in the same big network. So very, very akin to your green and red plan networks today. They also have a an accountable care network, which would, which does not include Gunderson. And so Medica even came in and said, hey, we're gonna give you this proposal. Based on the utilization of your employees today, it doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense. We talked it over with the committee. We agree. It does not make a lot of sense. So we just can evaluate the the broader Choice Passport network for Medica. They also provide stop-loss. They have a different pharmacy benefit provider, Express Scripts. Express Scripts is one of the national large pharmacy benefit managers, PBMs, that exists out there. Good pharmacy deals, but it is one hundred percent certain, we talked about this with the committee, that members, don't know how many, but some members would experience a formulary change if we moved to Medica. So that that didn't stop the committee from looking at it, but it did sort of raise the bar, right? It sort of, we sort of said, hey, that's gonna be a headache for folks. They might have to start, restart a course of treatment and go through the approval process and, you know, try different things. And and we know from experience that that's a headache. And that, you know, that's, it's not an unavoidable headache, but it need, you need to have enough savings to make that worth it for the group as a whole. And as you'll see, we didn't believe at the end of the day that that was, that there was sufficient savings to keep doing that. So that's the self-funded side. On the fully insured side, then, the Southeast Service Cooperative came in with the, with a very competitive proposal. This is a nonprofit organization that essentially helps public entities buy on a on a group basis, right? So if you think sort of about a, it's basically a a group purchasing sort of a cooperative that is managed by its members. The Southeast Service Cooperative is basically hired or contracted with Blue Cross Blue Shield to run a medical insurance program. Southeast Service Cooperative sells a lot of different things, but we were just focused in on the, on the, on the, on the Blue Cross, the medical side of it. Today, their pool, from a medical perspective, serves twenty-five different governmental entities, about fifty-five hundred employees, about fifty-two million dollars in premium. And as you can, as you can imagine, okay, that gives some size and some scale, right? We're, we're a two-million-dollar plan. The Southeast Service Cooperative is a fifty-two-million-dollar plan. So that's, there's, you know, there's some some assistance there. It would be a fully insured program. In other words, the Southeast Service Cooperative and Blue Cross would give you rates at the beginning of the year. You'd pay those rates all throughout the year. And if claims are great, Blue Cross and Southeast Service Cooperative win. If claims are bad, they lose. You don't pay anything different. And you don't get any benefit, down or up, for, you know, good or bad experiences. So it's a fully insured program. You pay your premium, you take your, and that's the end of the, and that's the end of the story. Now, the benefits are exactly the same as you, as you have today. So, you know, same three-plan structure, green, red, purple, no change there. No change in the pharmacy formulary, no change in the networks, all that sort of stuff stays exactly the same. It just lifted and shifted over to this Southeast Service Cooperative and do it on a fully insured basis. So that, that was, that was the choice that we, that we looked at with the committee. And on the next, next page, you'll see the financials. So where you are today is the first, the farthest left column, Blue Cross Blue Shield Minnesota Current. And this was assumed to be if we stayed and didn't and hadn't gone through an RFP process. You know, the the rates and the claims that we assumed and and so forth. If we just stayed status quo, just renewed like we normally do, our cost for 2021 would have been about two-point-one-four million. If, on the other hand, we, through the RFP process, Blue Cross Blue Shield reduced some of their rates and and, you know, gave us some some benefit and got us down to about a four-point-one percent reduction for 2021. Medical was slightly more on a self-insured basis, six-point-two percent reduction. But remember, the the issue that we had there that we really struggled with was the pharmacy, you know, and the the potential change for folks and their prescription drugs. The, and then the farthest right column is the Blue Cross Blue Shield Southeast Service Cooperative with an eighteen-point-one percent reduction, right? So what we kind of got to ultimately was looking at the second column and the fourth column. Essentially, no change in the plans. It's really more of a change around how you operate the program. And and the, this is really the easiest way to to sort of illustrate it to you because green line number one or, you know, green row number one, the total fixed cost, that's the minimum cost of the plan. So, you know, if we accepted the Blue Cross Blue Shield 2021 proposal, we'd pay half a million dollars for sure. And we likely, you know, it, in in a normal course of events, we'd pay about two million fifty-three thousand dollars. Under the Southeast Service Cooperative, we'd pay a million seven fifty, good day, bad day, every day, right? So there's no, there's no risk in there. There's no reward in there. So a year like we had this year would not happen under the Southeast Service Cooperative. We would still pay the million seven fifty-three. We would not get the savings that that, you know, I showed you earlier from a, you know, from a a savings to budget kind of perspective. So that was really the, that was really what it boiled down to. And and we had a long conversation with the group. And I, you know, I I mean that sincerely, long and 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 well, I think, well-thought-out. The committee talked about sort of the pros and the cons, right? It's, it, it, it's always hard to turn away from, you know, guaranteed savings, right? Because we're gonna get a savings on this deal over kind of what we were planning prior to the RFP. We're gonna get savings regardless. But the question becomes, okay, what's, what's the best thing long-term for the city and for the employees and their dependents? So while the Southeast Service Cooperative provided more savings and cash-on-the-barrelhead kind of savings, the advantages of a self-funded approach are a little harder to, you know, they're they're harder to throw away, but they're also kind of hard to describe. We have more control over the program. We can make decisions, and we're not sort of beholden to any vendor, we, from a plan design perspective. We get to access our own reserves and use them sort of as we see fit to, you know, to fund the plan. And then I, I've said this to the committee, I've said this to you. You know, if if you ask me, hey, what's the, what's the lowest-cost way to provide insurance over the long term, over the five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year horizon? Self-funding beats fully insured every single time. Because if you, if you know that your claims are gonna go up and down a little bit, you want to be in a position to get the surpluses from the good years. And by being fully insured, you never get those surpluses, ever. The insurance company wins on those every time. And for the privilege of sort of, you know, giving you a balanced budget over a period of years, the fully insured plan is gonna charge you. So they're gonna charge you risk charges and profit charges and different things along the way that are gonna, that are gonna add up over the, over the years. So at the end of the day, that's where the, that's, that's where the committee, you know, kind of landed. They also said, hey, you know, we're in the time of COVID-19. Stable benefits, having no changes at all, and having everybody be, you know, used to and and understanding the way things operate is an advantage. And so with all that, their recommendation was to stay with, stay with Blue Cross on a self-funded basis for 2021. We took that information back and negotiated with Blue Cross. We negotiated a second-year administrative fee guarantee. So we know that their, their admin fee, the cost So we know that their, their admin fee, the cost to just pay claims and answer the phones and run the network and things of that, those, along those lines. We got a second year at no change, right? So for '21 and '22, got the same fixed cost rate. So that was helpful. Medica had proposed that and we were able to get that out of Blue Cross after negotiations as well. So anyway, that's, that's where we, where we landed after, you know, a couple of good, good, long hours of talking it through with the committee and, and, and discussing it. So planning for 2021, what's this look like? So how we do this is we build up the costs from bottom up, right? So if we think about administrative fees and stop-loss premiums, we know what they are now. We've got that all sort of nailed down through the proposal process. We, we've talked about it already. It's about a half a million dollars that we're going to spend. And I would just note that if you look at that stop-loss premiums, so we're going to pay Blue Cross $465,000 in 2021. And if you think back to kind of how we started this conversation, they so far this year have paid us $980,000 in terms of that large claim that they've paid on our behalf. Now, that's their business. I'm not, I'm not sitting here crying crocodile tears for Blue Cross. I'm just telling you that, you know, that in this environment, you know, a, a small increase of 9% on stop-loss premiums is a very good deal, given kind of what the, what, what's happened both this year and in past years with the city. So that's our fixed cost line. If we think about then the claims cost line, we take a look at your past claims. I will tell you that what we did, what we did this year, not just for the city, but for all commercial clients, is we stopped, we stopped tracking claims experience and projecting it forward as of March. Because we believe very strongly from an actuarial perspective that April, May, June, July, and August really, and we didn't want to use that in any cases, too new. But, you know, those four months are not real months from a claims perspective because of the, you know, lack of elective procedures. So we've used prior claims that are a little more realistic and, and pulled them forward to decide kind of what we were going to project for 2021. Add those claims, put a claim trend on top of them, added the fixed costs to them to come up with this projected cost of about $2 million. The current budget premium, what we had set in those rates that we talked about at the beginning is about 2.14 million. And so that gives us a decrease, a budget actuarial decrease in, in costs of about 6.5%. So how that plays out is on this chart here. So you see 2020. If you just look at the Purple Plan, those columns, for instance, our budget rates, actuarial budget rates are $832 single and $2,339 family for this year. Next year, we're recommending $778 single and $2,187 family to reflect that 6.5% increase. So roll through that pretty quick, as quick as I can, but questions, questions from, from the group. I'm sure you have some.
Joe, this is council member Sholmar. Do you think that the 9% increase in the, the stop premium or whatever it's called is a result of the claims for this year? Would, would that premium increase, would have that have been lower if the claims would have been or the, the one large claim would not have appeared?
You know, that's a good, it's a good question. Blue, Blue Cross and most insurance carriers try to run that, the stop-loss as its own pool. So they don't, they, they will tell you, and this is not, again, this is not just a Blue Cross thing. This is every insurance vendor will, will say, hey, the whole idea of stop-loss is to cover you when those big claims come, right? We're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to hit anybody in any, in any one year because of their experience, because that's why you buy this insurance. So if, so what they would say is, you know, should be probably a 9% regardless. I'm going to tell you that stop-loss is one of those things where it's sort of heads, you know, heads they win, tails you lose kind of a deal, right? If you have a good year, you're probably going to get a 9%. If you have a bad year, you're going to get a 9%, maybe more, because they might know that you don't have a lot of options or they just, you know, they, they're trying to get it back. So it's a, it's a very good question. I will tell you this, that if we look back at, at the, we had that in the, in the year-by-year chart. Over the past several years, Blue Cross has consistently paid out more in claims than they've collected in premiums. So, so there, you know, the city has done well by that, by that policy over the past five years.
Thank you.
I also remember thoroughly with a question. Thanks, thanks Mayor. Joe, this is more, I guess, a little bit beyond perhaps our discussion today. But what, what is your company and what is, what are the trends that you're seeing in the, the world of, of COVID and in what might happen, say, next year, which might have an impact on all of these discussions and projections going forward?
Yeah, great, great question, Councilman. You know, we have a, we have a COVID modeler, you know, our actuaries have a, have a COVID-19 modeler. And I think we're up to iteration six. I think I saw six A or six B the other day come through on my email. And they, they make small tweaks here and there, but there's a lot of things going on, right? So we've got, we've got incidence rates, we've got testing rates, we've got spread rates. So those are kind of inputting on the front end. Then on the back end, there's the whole idea of severity rates. And then ultimately vaccine, right? And when does a vaccine become available? How much does it cost? How many sort of doses does a person need? And how quickly will that, will that occur? Because it's, it, for us on the, you know, the overall healthcare planning side, it's less about the cost of the vaccine, because I think we've all kind of, you know, I, I think it's fairly safe at this point to say that cost of vaccine is in the flu shot kind of range. So call it $50. I don't know. Might be, might need two doses, might need three, I'm not sure. But, you know, it, it, a $50, $50 to $200 sort of number is not going to change any of these projections. But what it might do is the quicker that that happens, then the quicker the whole medical community gets back to normal and we start doing some of these things. Knee surgeries, backs, hips, shoulders, things that, you know, that aren't necessarily life-threatening, but they're life-impacting. And those are costly things. So the quicker we get back to that, the quicker we get back to kind of the way we were. And you didn't ask this, but let me just say it because it, I find it fascinating, honestly. There is, there is pretty good documented evidence that depending on when, when these sorts of things happen, when, when care is deferred, you would think, oh, there'll be this great big rush, you know, to get all that taken care of when, when the world comes back. And when you look at the world of like hurricanes and tornadoes, which is, you know, not this, but similar, we find that, that somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 to 40% of these things, knees, backs, hips, et cetera, they never come back. Things that were going to be, that were going to be done, they either got better, people lived with them. You know, other things cropped up or they resolved themselves without treatment. And so there will be a bit of a spike, but it might not be as, as high as we might otherwise say. And so then the bigger issue for me is, you know, the three-to-five-year, the more severe things, cancers, right? Coronary issues, things that, things that maybe we would have caught earlier and then they wouldn't be as costly. Now they'll be more costly, but they won't, that, that won't happen until '23, '24, '25.
Well, I appreciate that. Thanks for the answer. And, and since this will be my last chance to chat with you on this, other than at the regular meeting tonight, I want to thank you for the excellent advice you've provided to the city during my term as, as a councilman over the years. And I also want to, again, congratulate and thank the committee, the health committee of the city for another excellent job in, in discussions. And I think it's looking forward very well. And I think we'll have a good year, next year as well for the city. So appreciate that. Thanks again.
Thank you, Councilman. Been a pleasure.
Mayor George here.
I think we lost City Hall audio again.
Oh dear.
I just say, go ahead, George.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
All I want to simply say, Joe, is very good presentation. You are definitely a expert in this field. And I feel you're leading us very well with the committee in the right direction. So thanks for the good work.
Thanks, Councilman. I appreciate it. Thanks very much. Been, been a pleasure working with you.
All right. Well, thank you, Joe. And we've got five minutes before our next, our council meeting starts, so.
30.
6:30 and we call the meeting to order. We'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good evening and got a few announcements to make. Right off, we're going to be moving 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 of your new business, all having to do with our city health insurance plan, up right after the three public hearings. And I need to read a statement here. It's just after 6:30 and I've called the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.021 in response to the COVID-19 emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call. So each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak so that you're easily identified. And then I'd like to also say a little belated happy birthday to Herman Amison, who celebrated her 150th birthday last Saturday with her family and friends. Amazing woman, still living home alone at her home on West Broadway. So happy birthday, Herman, and many more. Also, let's see here, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry, crucial for the health and strength of Minnesota's diverse economy. And whereas manufacturing added $52.7 billion to Minnesota's economy in 2019, representing the second-largest contribution, 14% to the state's gross domestic product by any industry. And whereas workers took home $21.6 billion in wages in Minnesota manufacturing jobs in 2019, the second-largest total payroll among private sector industries. And whereas manufactured exports brought $21 billion into the Minnesota economy in 2019. And whereas manufacturing in Minnesota pays an average annual wage of $67,098, which is 15% higher than the state's overall average wage. And whereas manufacturing provides 322,000 highly skilled, well-paying jobs, which significantly contribute to Minnesota's high standard of living and economic vitality. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson hereby proclaim October 7th to the 13th, 2020, as Minnesota manufacturing week in the city of Winona, Minnesota. And I also sort of sadly, in a way, want to wish, I want to recognize the service of Police Chief Paul Bosstrak, who will be retiring on September 24th after 28 years of service. Paul started his career with the city of Winona as a police officer on Christmas Eve, December 24th, 1991. Within two years, he was appointed the position of Emergency Response Team Leader, who supervised 14 officers from Winona Goodview and Winona County Police Divisions, who would respond to high-risk crisis situations. In 1996, he was appointed to the Narcotics Division until he was promoted to Sergeant the same year. Paul was promoted to Deputy Chief in December 2003 and Police Chief in April 2009. Paul is well-known for his calm leadership style, no matter the situation, and for being a true team player throughout all levels of the city organization. His door was always open for a conversation with officers and city staff to discuss work, food, travel, mountain biking, hiking, and most importantly, family. He was always successful to the public. The city appreciates and formally recognizes the service of happy retirement. And thank you very much for all of your good work over the many years.
I can't hear you, Paul.
I think he's doing that by design. We'll get him.
I want to hear.
All right, he's coming. We start over. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much and thank you, thank you to the council too. We've been very good support over the years from both mayor and council. And that's made a big difference to, to have a department of the caliber that I, it's become today. And we have some of our future sitting back here. Three deputy chiefs all at once. I don't know if I've ever seen that. And one chief-to-be, Deputy Chief Eric Engrave, Jay Rasmussen, and Tom Williams, who will start on Friday. It's been a great place to work in Winona. I've appreciated the city and the department and never had a regret. It's been a very rewarding place to have a career. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And you've done a great job.
All right. Thank you. I'm also happy to announce that the Winona Fine Arts Commission has chosen their 2020 Fine Arts Commission Award winners. These awards celebrate individual artists and arts organizations and their supporters who have had a significant impact on our creative community. The commission requests nominations from the community at large. And we would like to thank all who participated and championed their distinguished and talented nominees. Selected from this very impressive group of nominees to receive the 2020 Fine Arts Commission Awards are Lisa Douglas, Ted Holland, Robert Armstrong, also known as Dr. Bob, and the owner and staff of the popular downtown creative store, Yarnology. Roger Boulay, the Chair of the Fine Arts Commission, will now say a few words about each of the year's winners. Roger?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the council for your ongoing support of the arts in Winona. We really appreciate all you do for our arts and culture sector. I also want to take a minute to acknowledge our staff liaison, Lee Gundersheimer, for his work. And also thank Steve Sarvi, Chad Hubel, Carlos Espinoza, and Monica Moyer for everything that they do to support the commission. So thank you all very much. I'm going to try to keep it brief. We have four award winners this year. The Fine Arts Commission gives honorary awards for outstanding contributions to the arts in Winona. Lisa Douglas was nominated by Jamie Schwaba. Lisa Douglas is an avid learner and creator who loves to share her experiences with others. Her interests range from visual arts and music to animal care and training. Her children claim there's always a deliberate science experiment in the kitchen. Her families, her family always dreads the phrase, "I was thinking we could do." At the end of a good day, she claims the best view is from the top of one of her horses. Lisa's been an instructor at MCA for over three years in both music and art. She grew up in the area and has been the musical director and accompanist for the Winona Hymns, accompanied for Winona and Fountain City Choirs in solo and ensembles and more. But most impressive is the work she has done during the pandemic. She has helped so many, young and old, stay and get creative during these challenging times. Additionally, since the pandemic began, Lisa has taught intentional doodling classes to elder network caregivers, SMU alumni, and other art techniques to Caledonia Public Library patrons and Winona Friendship Center members. She has helped the She has helped these groups gather in a creative and meaningful way. And maybe we can savor applause after I talk a little bit about all four award winners, but then, at the end, we'll do like a big virtual applause and give them a really warm thank you. Next is Ted Holland. Ted was nominated, it's worth noting, he was nominated by two people, by Mary Alice Anderson and Mary Farrell. Ted was born in Cyrus, Minnesota, in nineteen thirty-nine. Ted lived in a succession of small Minnesota and Wisconsin towns as son of a Lutheran pastor. After high school, he began a series of adventures, both academic and economic. College at both Luther and Decora, and the U of M, several years at UHS, Universal Hospital Services, at which he learned of and became accredited as a respiratory therapist, followed by six years of college teaching for them at Ohio State. Later, with some colleagues, he purchased UHS. Due to inspiration by his then-bride, Maria Faust, Ted became deeply immersed in writing poetry, which he continues to do at age eighty-one, living now at Calistacourt. Ted has been nominated for his dedication to the Maria W. Faust Sonnet Contest. The contest has provided an opportunity for poets from around the world to participate in Winona's own celebration of poetry. The Sonnet Contest originated with the Great Rivers Shakespeare Festival in two thousand and eight. Word of mouth and information and poetry websites and publications helped the contest grow to be much more than a local event. The direct email list now has about eleven hundred and fifty recipients. In two thousand and twenty, there were five hundred and thirty-one sonnet submissions, a thirty percent increase from two thousand and nineteen. The entries came from thirty-nine states and thirteen countries. The Maria W. Faust Sonnet Contest and Ted Holland inspire artistic creativity and bring Winona to the world, giving both Winona and GRSF a wider reputation with contest entrants from afar wanting to visit. Yarnology, the shop was founded almost ten years ago, November of two thousand and ten, when two women who loved knitting decided this lovely arty college town deserved to have a good little yarn shop. They didn't know whether anyone would walk through the doors, but they thought it was a leap worth taking. Yarnology's first day of business was the day of Art Walk two thousand and ten, and the planners of that event included the new shop in their marketing materials. It was an amazing day. The supporters of the arts in Winona were determined to also support this brand-new venture. The two women sold lots of yarn and made lots of friends. Yarnology was originally conceived as a gathering place and to build community. And to a great extent, accepting pandemics, that goal is achieved person by person many days of the week at Yarnology. The staff is knowledgeable and encouraging. The makers are generous and other, and relationships are built. The staff has grown substantially from the original two. They keep Yarnology fun and fabulous and connected to the arts in Winona. This is a celebration of them. And Yarnology was nominated by Carrie Frederick. And then finally, Robert Armstrong, or Dr. Bob, was nominated by Ed Hoffman. Dr. Bob has been delighting audiences with his style of off-brand humor and experimental puppetry for over twenty years. From his humble beginnings, traveling the country with Renaissance festivals, to peddling puppets on the banks of the Mississippi, Dr. Bob has always been at the forefront of the entertainment industry, creative and clever, with an eye for beauty and the love of laughter. Dr. Bob is always glad to bring a smile to your heart. Dr. Bob has contributed as much to Winona's underground art scene as anyone I can think of. From vaudevillian puppet shows performed off the back of his granny trike, to fun, modern DJ sets, to his time as proprietor of the incomparable Green Lantern, he's the real deal. He deserves way more recognition than he's gotten over the years. And that was written by Ed Hoffman, who nominated Dr. Bob. And that's a bit about each award winner. And now, maybe if everyone wants to unmute and join me in congratulating Yarnology and these three other folks, thanks for all you do for the arts in Winona.
Thank you, Roger. Congratulations to all of the award winners tonight. All right. Well, that's all I have. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I want to also push along my own appreciation for all of the hard work from Chief Bosstrak. It's been an honor to work alongside you. When you told me that you were leaving, I kind of felt like my right arm was being taken from me, but I know that it's the right thing to do. You're an inspiration to our officers, so that they know that there is an opportunity to have a great career, but also leave when your brain's still not completely scrambled. So, I know you're going to enjoy your time off and your retirement, that you won't just sit on the couch. I know you've got lots of projects. If we don't have any already, I'm sure there'll be a long list for you. I think it really needs to be said how you left this department speaks so highly of you and those that came before you. It's a very deep bench that we have, and the fact that we're able to stay in-house for the next chief and for our deputy chiefs and sergeants says an awful lot about the folks that you guys hire, the way that you mentor and train them, and that reflects great credit upon yourself. And Deputy Chief Williams, literally, you have big shoes to fill. And I know that you're going to be up to the task, and especially with your team of these two deputy chiefs, it's going to be great. So, I'm going to really miss you, and I hope you don't stay away too long.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate that. That's been great working for you as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Monica, are you going to do the roll call? I thought Tina was.
Tina will do the roll call.
Okay. All right. No confusion. Mayor Mark Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Thurlie?
Here.
Muller?
Here.
Alexander?
Here.
Ayden?
Here.
Councilmember Borzakowski?
Here.
Scholmeyer?
Here.
All right. We're all here.
We will move to the required public hearings. The first public hearing is item two point one, is to establish the zoning at twenty-two, eight thirty-nine, County Road seventeen. Carlos Espinoza, I believe, has a presentation. And for the public, when we go to the public hearing, please state your name and address before you speak. Thank you.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open, and let staff start it up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, two-two-eight-three-nine-
All right, Lucy. Lucy, it's really hard to hear you. Can you get a little closer to the microphone? Sorry.
Okay. Is this better?
Oh, yes, much.
So, this is another step in the process of the property at two-two-eight-three-nine, County Road seventeen. And we have city planner Carlos Espinoza with us to describe this next step, which is to establish the initial zoning for the property. Carlos?
Thank you, Lucy. Evening, Council and Mayor. Two-two-eight-three-nine, County Road seventeen is directly across County Road seventeen from the Bridges Gulf Course entrance. The property was recently annexed into the city of Winona. The annexation area is shown in blue. The subject property, which is approximately three acres, is shown in red. The subject property, again, is meant to facilitate development of the maximum thirty-six-unit Cedar Brook co-op on the site. R-three zoning is necessary in order to do this. On August tenth, the Planning Commission recently recommended approval of the R-three zoning, three to two, with two conditions. First, all land use zoning subdivision and site plan approvals to construct a three-story co-op senior living facility with up to thirty-six units shall be obtained by June two thousand and twenty-one. And number two, if condition number one is not met, application of the R-three zoning shall be null and void, and the property shall return to an unzoned classification. So, in the future, if this were to happen, if the approvals weren't obtained by June two thousand and twenty-one, the property would return to an unzoned classification, and would need to be zoned in order for any type of development to occur. For this item, there's three alternatives available to council. First, approve the request as submitted. Under this option, a motion to introduce the ordinance, which is in your packets for adoption, should be made. You could deny the request. Under that option, council would need to state on record findings supporting denial of the request. You could also postpone a decision on the item to allow staff additional time to answer any outstanding questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Does the council have any questions for Carlos? Now that I can open it up to the public. Anybody wish to speak to this issue? With your name and your address, please.
Hi there. This is Melissa Nelson with Bradford Development, five oh one North Riverfront Drive, Mankato, Minnesota, five six zero zero one. We are the sponsor of Cedar Brook Cooperative. And I just wanted to get you up to speed with where we're at. Plans are being finalized for the twenty-eight unit building that we discussed previously. So, three stories, twenty-eight units. And the reservation list has held strong with thirty-six people on that reservation list interested in moving forward and purchasing a unit within the senior housing cooperative. And I just wanted to note that I think that speaks to the location and what these folks are desiring in their retirement years. And just wanted to make you aware that I am on and available for questions, should you have any, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Melissa. Others that wish to speak?
This is Jean Nelson.
Go ahead.
I, this is my first time following along on, in your council meeting. I'm very interested in watching this process. I'm very supportive of it. I'm one of the thirty-some people who have paid money into this venture, and we hope to see it move forward. We're at a point in our lives where we need to make plans, and there are not that many resources that are available. So, this is especially attractive here to many of us, and I look forward to just learning more tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
And Jean, could you please provide your address?
Oh, yes. It's three six zero zero nine Homer Lane, Winona, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? If you do, unmute yourself and state your name and address. Anybody else wish to speak? One final time. Anybody else wish to speak?
I would note that we did receive written comments from Sandy Sherkeith, and those will be entered into the record as well.
Okay. Thank you, Monica. If nobody else wishes to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Can anybody hear me?
Pardon?
Yes, we can.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is Leon Bowman, Wilson Township, twenty-two, eighty-two, seven, Carbon Heights Road. You're putting a three-story unit in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You know, that's spot zoning in our book. You know, you're surrounded on three sides by Wilson Township, and it just doesn't fit the neighborhood. I realize that you have people that want to move in there, but it does not fit the neighborhood. We consider it spot zoning. Now, if you go along with this, what means do we have? You annex another chunk, and you basically do whatever you want. You know, I understand you're trying to change this around, but it just doesn't fit. If you were putting houses in there, it would be a different story, but it just is not something that fits into that neighborhood. So, that's our comments, and I'm kind of disappointed that we have to go this route. Just, you know, zone it so it fits. You've got somebody that wants to build on it that doesn't fit the neighborhood. And it's just not the thing to do. With that, I'll let you get back to your meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. I will now close the public hearing again.
Michelle Alexander, I'll make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance for adoption and accept it to attachment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Scholmeyer, second.
Okay. A motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Other discussion?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
You know, there has been a lot of discussion about this particular development. And I have said in the past, I think, you know, we have a demand for this type of housing. We have developers in town who could be building this kind of housing. And unfortunately, they're choosing not to, and so we have a developer coming from outside of town. This isn't the ideal location. I understand that. We have been working diligently to have, you know, an orderly annexation agreement with Wilson Township. And hopefully, we'll be able to follow through with that in the future. You know, folks, we're moving south, either along Highway forty-three or along County Road seventeen or up in Carbon Heights. It's the only place we have to go. So, it's going to have to happen sooner or later. And I'm not interested in delaying this for a year or two years. As the Chair from Wilson Township has mentioned, the additional cost for doing that are just not worth the wait. So, this wouldn't be my preferred location, but I'm looking forward to seeing this happen.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Any other comments from council? Sam Hyde. All right. Well, we're going to proceed to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thurlie?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Ayden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is item two point two, is to consider a resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges.
Okay. Public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. Let me ask if there's any comments. Any wish to speak?
Mark, I'm sorry, Jessica, or I'm sorry, I can't hear who's speaking. I'm so sorry.
Okay. She's going to try it again with the microphone closer.
Thank you.
The updated, is this better, Michelle?
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. So, the updated assessment amount, including payments through three fifteen today, is two hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And that's against four hundred properties.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. Any other comments? Anybody wish to make any comments? I'll ask again. Anybody else wish to make any comments? Anybody wish to speak? There are none. I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mark, Michelle Alexander will make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and levy the assessments.
Eileen, I second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Eileen. Any further- Any further discussion?
Mayor George here.
George, go ahead.
Yeah, looking at these numbers here, they just don't seem to be going down. They're holding about the same or a little bit higher every year is just all I need to say, so.
I think they're a little less this year.
They are lower. Yeah, a little bit.
Somebody else wish to speak?
Councilman Thirley.
Okay, go ahead, Al.
I note from our agenda that these persons that appeal the unpaid charges would be given until September 28th, but I understand we didn't have any appeals during this process, so that's kind of a moot point right now.
Go ahead, Paul.
Jessica might be able to help on this. I noticed there is one particular part of this, these assessments, about 30% are attributable to one property, one company. Is that correct?
Sorry, you're saying that 30% of them are against one specific property or one property owner?
Yeah, it seemed like there was one property owner that has numerous properties that is accountable for about 30% of this whole entire bill. Is that typical and, you know, is this because, or is this because of the pandemic or do we, we have this, is this an ongoing thing? And just kind of curious about this.
So there, there are a couple of property owners that are consistently on the assessment roll that have several properties. So I think the one property owner who has the most properties has been on the list last three or four years with quite a few properties.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I have closed the public hearing.
You did, yes.
Double check. I think we're ready to vote then. By roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Moving on to the next item, it's a public hearing. Item 2.3 is to consider business assistance subsidy to BCS Automotive Enterprises LLC.
Okay, public hearing, so I'll declare it open. And I know Lucy would like to make some comments upfront.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is another step in our process to help BCS Automotive Enterprises stay in Winona. As you know, they were considering a location decision and Winona was able to put together a package along with the state of Minnesota. So before you, tonight, is the Minnesota Investment Fund. That's a loan from the state to the city and then the city in turn loans the money to the business. And if the business meets goals and objectives, out of the $600,000 loan, $500,000 would be forgiven. But again, to do that, they must retain 90 jobs, create 117 new jobs, and invest over $2 million in their company. And I believe their plant manager is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Plant manager's name is?
Yes, good evening, this is Chad Heltemus, plant manager with BCS in Winona. I live at 1409 Highland Drive in Winona and I would like to thank the council for considering this support. I know I've had the chance to speak with the council a number of times here over the last few months and want to continue to express our appreciation.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate you staying in Winona. Other comments? Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? One last chance, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Michelle Alexander will make a motion to enter into agreement with BCS Automotive Enterprises and accept the two attachments.
Councilmember Thirley here, I seconded.
All right, a motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul, I believe. Any further discussion?
Mark, Michelle Alexander.
Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
Lucy, staff, BCS, Chad, I think this is a fantastic way to help not only our community benefit, but that business benefit and the people that work there benefit. And I just really commend you for the amount of work that you all put in to make sure that we were able to beat out New York and keep BCS here and help them grow in our community instead of someone else's. So if, this is a great plan, I, I'm just very appreciative about the amount of time that you took to do that for us and so thank you for that.
Okay.
Councilmember Thirley with a comment.
Go ahead, Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with councilperson Alexander and I also want to point out that our core authority was instrumental in helping along with this area. There is one minor correction to the loan agreement, I wish to point out. It's on page 18 of the loan agreement about almost to the bottom of the page where it, on section 9.15 says notices and demands. I believe the addresses and individuals listed there are reversed, so to the lender it should be the city of Winona's address and Myron White, to the borrower it should be Chad Heltemus and his address as well. So that's a minor correction, I guess it can be made staff-wise, administratively, it doesn't really affect our actions tonight in my opinion. Thank you.
Good catch, Al.
Mayor, Eileen?
Go ahead, Eileen.
I just had a clarification question. I'm very glad we're doing this and I, I'm, one of the things I really appreciate is that part of the agreement is making sure that people are receiving fair wages. There is a part on page 14 under section eight that I was just hoping to get some clarification. It's 8.1B and then further down under A and B, it said, it designates a per hour wage and then says exclusive of benefits. I'm guessing that means before the benefits are calculated or does that mean that, that people do not receive benefits? Just curious.
Separate from benefits.
That's all I needed, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, George here.
George.
As you read that opening statement there about jobs and things and, and companies in Minnesota, this is a very, very big player in there and without these companies and without these jobs, our community and our schools simply go nowhere. These are the drivers behind making our community successful.
All right, any other comments?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
I would certainly echo the comments from my colleagues previously and I just want to thank staff, Lucy and staff and the Mr. Heltemus about getting the detail down in this contract. I think the detail is important and I'm, just like councilmember Muller addressed in 81B, the detail about the jobs and that's important to our community. So thank you all very much for doing this very hard work.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to vote. By roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now we will move to new business. Item 5.1 is the 2021 City Health Insurance Recommendations for the Health Plan Designs.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve the City Health Insurance Committee's recommendations for 2021.
Councilmember Scholmeyer, second.
All right, motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Open for discussion, questions? Joe, do you have anything you want to add?
Mayor, council, just, just to summarize, we, we had a pre-council session earlier this evening where we discussed the excellent work that the city's insurance committee did to both evaluate and keep track of what's been going on in a very crazy year from a health insurance perspective and then evaluate the responses to the city's RFP process, which at this point would lead to the recommendation that's before you around retaining Blue Cross Blue Shield on a self-insured basis with a reduction in budget rates for 2021 of approximately six and a half percent.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
I just want to thank you, Joe. The RFP process, another good year, lots of things for us to consider and you really helped us to understand each decision as we were going through them and let us throw a lot of ideas at you and your, your advice I think was spot on again as always. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
Any other comments before we vote? All right, we'll proceed to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is 5.2, the 2021 ancillary benefits.
I, Michelle Alexander would make a motion to approve the city's life insurance, long-term disability, short-term disability, flexing spending and health reimbursement account.
George seconded that.
All right, motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.3 is the 2021 dental insurance coverage and rates.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the city's dental insurance.
Eileen, I second.
All right, a motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will go back to the petitions, requests and communications. Item 3.1 is the appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Sarah Ventura.
I, Michelle Alexander, move approval.
Eileen, I second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor, Eileen here.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Not specific to this appointment necessarily, but just the commission appointments in general is, do we advertise when there are vacant seats or is it just you have to look on the city website to know which seats are up?
I know we have in the past. Monica, maybe you could answer that better.
We do advertise on occasion, but there, this is a commission where there's almost consistently at least one opening because it does have 15 seats on the commission. So this is one that there's usually an opening, so we would be constantly advertising.
Thank you.
Comments? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2 is Katie's Place Street Closure Request for October 10th.
George needs to approve that request.
Councilmember Scholmeyer, second.
Motion by George and I'm not sure who's seconded.
Paul can have it.
Okay, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Fullmeyer?
Aye.
Carries.
Item 3.3 is a request for stop signs at Harriet and Wilson at the Third Street intersections.
I move approval of that request, Michelle Alexander, or I may make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Pam Iden seconds that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm just wondering, is it, are these going to be four-way stops or are we just stopping Wilson and Harriet Streets?
They're stopping just on Wilson and Harriet, it'd be through, throughway on Third Street or Second Street.
Thank you.
All right, I had it right the first time. Any other questions?
Councilman Thirley here.
Go ahead, Al.
An observation, as one who travels in that area fairly frequently, it's, I guess, an accident waiting to be happened and I'm glad that our safety coordinator came up with this thought and I think he'll prevent future accidents, so I'll definitely support it.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Pam Iden.
Go ahead.
I continue to get comments from people that they are confused by the, by the lack of controlled intersections in some parts of town. Do we have a, do we have an orderly way of looking at either accidents or which, which streets are controlled and which are not? I appreciate this move here, the Third Street, but do we have another, we have an organized plan for looking at these?
Well, I don't think so. Brian, do you have a response to that?
Brian, we can't hear you.
Through the microphone.
The orderly plan was presented to council a couple of years ago and denied.
Okay.
Okay, so in, in place of that, we have the safety coordinator that, that takes a look at what's going on, is that it? That's the person we're relying on?
No, that's, that's just happened to be this one.
Okay, okay.
Ultimately, it's the Public Works Director, City Engineer, that would bring something forward to council.
And oftentimes it's neighbors too, appealing for a stop sign at their intersection as well.
So they contact staff and then we'll look into it, bring back recommendation if warranted.
Mark, Michelle Alexander?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I actually called Brian about Third Street and a few of the other blocks down there. I'd gotten some calls from the neighbors just saying that, that the intersections are difficult with all the truck traffic and the big buildings and, I mean, it's worked well that the neighborhoods themselves advocate for where they want stop signs. I think originally when Brian brought the orderly stop sign plan to us, there were so many stop signs being put up that the pushback from the community was a hard no. And this seems to be a, to my, my mind, at least the people that want it are requesting it and then they go and look at that intersection and make a determination and bring it to us and it seems to be working. I know George on your end, quite a few stop signs have been put up in that manner if I'm, if I remember correctly.
Yes, you are correct.
I, I, I too remember when Brian brought that, that plan to council, I remember that the pushback was really that it cost too much, that the number of stop signs and the cost it would be to, to install all of them was, was rather kind of amazing. I think that I, I'm not sure then why I continued to get comments from people, perhaps they are new people. I still think that we need a, an orderly way of looking at this besides just letting people complain. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any other comments? None, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Thirley?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Vollmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 3.4 is a request from the Winona Main Street Program for a tea party to be held on Friday, September 25th.
Hi, George, moves to approve that request.
Al second.
All right, a motion by George and a second by Eileen. Discussion?
Eileen here.
Go ahead.
Um, just that I'm, I'm very happy this has been proposed. I think it's a really lovely idea, and I'm excited that this tea shop is going to be a new addition to our business community. So, yeah, just thank you to the people organizing it.
All right. Any other comments? Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Vollmeyer.
Hi.
Carries.
And on to new business, item 5.4, the 2021 budget and tax levy.
All right.
Steve, do you want to? Mayor and council, pretty much what we had briefed council early in September, I did make an adjustment under the social worker program and reduced to two employees. Been doing a lot of discussions with other communities, and three seemed like an overreach. It would be great to have them, but I think two is a good starting place. I'm not, I don't believe that one, I would recommend one at this time. If this passes this, this evening, the next step will be to put a subcommittee together. Councilmember Borzakowski and Muller have agreed to sit on that, along with some residents from the community, and are one of our deputy chiefs. So, we'll be looking forward to doing a deeper dive, trying to determine what we think would be the best, the best model for us to follow for the city of Winona. We'll brief that back to council in time free to make a final decision, because this could always get moved, removed from the budget in December, and I think that was the only adjustment that we made.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, Councilman Thirley here.
Go ahead, Al.
I would make a motion to adopt the proposed 2021 budget and adopt the resolution for the proposed tax levy collectible in 2021.
Eileen Muller, I will second that.
A motion by Al and a second by Eileen. Discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, George here.
Go ahead, George.
And I've had some discussions with, with Steve today, and I gave the taxpayer and a small business owner and a large business owner my word back in May, that I would not support a property tax increase, and I am going to keep my word on that tonight.
All right. Any other comments?
Um, Mayor, Eileen Muller.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Um, just wanted clarification for the sake of the public, the tax, tax impact chart that is included in our packet, just for the sake of anyone at home who's curious, there's the table where it says property type, residential homestead, lists estimated market value, and then over on the far right is a column with the estimated tax rate, and the number that is over there, so, for example, it says the average residential homestead, 143,900, has $26, and is that the increased amount, or is that the total amount for someone in a residence like that?
Mayor and council, that would, that would be the increase.
Great, so, for many of us who have a home valued at about the average of that, for $26, we could support additional staff members who could help the community, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thirley.
Go ahead, Al.
Thank you, so this reduces our total property tax levy for the city's portion of the property tax from what it was initially when we had our budget meetings, to the 5.2% levy increase that is, is part of this proposal now.
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify that, and again, I think as Councilmember Muller pointed out, in general, with that average increase and average residential homestead valuation, these increases are fairly minor, and again, as our city manager pointed out, we can't always, depending on how this committee works out, either successfully or needs more work, we can either go ahead with it next year, or we can eliminate it, have more work on it, and then have it for another budget term, so, those are my comments. That's why I'm really supporting this now, to get the ball rolling on this, so that we can have something in place. Everything I've heard about since we've had this initial discussion has been very positive in, in the direction we're moving, and I think it's, it's something we definitely need to consider, and this is a good step in that direction, so thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Councilmember Shonmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I, I understand that this increase may appear to be high during pandemic times, but I just want to thank city manager Sarvee and, and the committees putting together for the work they're going to be doing, and looking at these potential staff additions, and combined with the community outreach officers. Really, the city of Winona is, is on a leading edge here in the state of Minnesota, maybe not in the front, but very close, to, to doing the work of, of a community organizing that brings the community closer together, and, and brings the, the type of skilled professionals to the situations that we need to have, and, and I'm really happy that the city is looking at this, and, and again, that the city of Winona is, is leading the way.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I agree, I think that, you know, I've been a part of some early discussions about this, it's really kind of exciting to me, I think, to think that, that we're taking this step, and that this could result in freeing up some of the officers' time to do other things, and also to give people services that, that they need, that they may not get otherwise, and reduce the number of calls that the police receive, and I'm anxious to hear how the committee discussions go, and what the results are of that before we make a final decision on this, but I certainly support it. Any other comments? Before we vote? I think we're ready to vote, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Nay.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Nay.
Vollmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries, 5-2.
Item 5.5 is the 2021 budget and levy, announce the date for the public comment portion of the regularly scheduled council meeting for December 21st.
George moves to approve that date of December 21st.
Vollmeyer second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Vollmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.6 is the proposed fee ordinance for 2021.
George motions to introduce the proposed fee ordinance.
Eileen second.
Motion by George and seconded by Eileen. Discussion?
Councilman Thirley with a few questions. I don't think that's my phone.
I think it's Paul's phone.
Okay, um, anyway, on, I assume with our fee scheduled in our packet, if there's nothing mentioned in the 2021 proposal, that means that the fee has not changed, or I'm seeing a nod from our, our city clerk, thank you, Monica, and then on, uh, let's see here, on, it would be, gosh, there's no page numbers here, on the Community Development Inspections and Planning Department, I just have a curiosity question about permits for, I think it's, I don't know where it is, but it's for the section that has in red all permits in this section, and then below that, it changes a few things with a please remove in the 2021 column, and then it has a new base rate for a mechanical base fee, and someone tell me what, what that is?
All right, Lucy's the, getting her information in front of her.
All right.
What page was that on, Al?
Uh, well, there's no page numbers here, it's, it's the page under Community Development Inspections and Planning Department, and I think in our packets, uh, gosh, it's one, two, three, and then, yeah, then it goes to the fifth page, which is Community Development, and then sixth, and then, I guess it'd be the seventh page of that, there's a, there's a section in the middle of the page marked in red on the left side, all permits in this section. Suppose I should have called earlier about this, but I was out of town after I'd gotten the packet, and I wasn't able to until today. And then I have a few more questions.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, as you can see, the gas permits, such as dryers, ranges, et cetera, were raised from $33 to $36, and then, instead of all permits in this section, if we do have other gas appliances, it would be a base fee of $20.
Okay.
Uh, that's what, that would be.
Okay, thank, thank you for the clarification, probably based on experience, and that's, makes things run more smoothly. Yeah, let's see, okay. On, Kiplo paid beyond that, under the Engineering and Public Works Department, at the top of the page, where it talks about something in the header that says, colocation of each small wireless facility attached to a wireless support structure owned by the city, do you mean by that colocation, instead of colocation, it's C-O-L-L-O-C-A-T-I-O-N?
It's a spelling error, it's colocation.
Thank you, that's, that's what I thought, I just thought I'd make sure that that was a new term, I wasn't familiar with it. And then on that same page, to the right of the, of that particular column I was talking about, it says 150 per year for rent per SAML wireless facility, I assume that means same?
Small wireless.
For a small wireless?
It's small wireless.
Okay.
That's the new structures that are going up.
Yeah.
Great big towers.
Right, it's one on the, on the polls, okay, and then... Yeah, on, on the Water Department, under Engineering Public Works, it talks about the repair replacement of a meter, it doesn't change the, the pricing to 2021, but it says $50 under the 2020 fees, $50 per, for labor and equipment plus cost for, and there's nothing else after that, I assume it's cost for parts, I, I really don't know. I guess, I don't know if Brian is still around or not, or?
Brian's here.
Okay.
Moving to the microphone.
Good, thank you.
Tom Gate is possible.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Possible for meter.
Cost per meter, okay.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Al. Any other comments? Not, we'll move to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
George. George.
Hi.
Okay.
Vollmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.7, this is council chambers, equipment upgrades, we are receiving, or we had a quote from EPA Audio to upgrade all the equipment in the council chambers, that would include the audio system, the cameras, the broadcast system, we would also include project management, installation, training, and integration with social media, so our Zoom meetings would go a little smoother.
Councilmember Shonmeyer, is there a motion here that you are looking for?
I'm waiting for you to make one.
I'm making one right now, I'm happy to do it.
Pam Aiden seconds.
All right, a motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. If there's any one item that I think I've heard more complaints about since I've been on the, with mayor, I think it's the quality of the audio in the council chambers, so I'm happy that we're going to be hopefully moving forward on this.
Mayor, this is Pam, I have one question for Monica.
Go ahead.
Yes, Monica, is there a timeline for this? So, the cameras would be ordered tomorrow, they thought there was a delay because of COVID, so many other cities are also replacing camera equipment, so we're looking at maybe eight weeks to 12 weeks, but we're hoping to get it done yet in 2020. Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Thirley with a question.
Go ahead, Al.
Were there any other bidders for this service or project?
We received a quote from another company, AVI, and they were very similar, we actually received quotes from both companies last winter, and we were planning to do this project in the second quarter, but then due to COVID, we kind of put this on the back burner, we asked both companies to update their proposals, then we asked EPA to add some other items, such as additional wireless microphones, so that we can do more things in the council chambers and do more with social media, so, long, long answer, yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm just noting that they, on their front page of their proposal, have listing for a University of Minnesota contract number, and I'm just wondering, is that some, what does that mean for us, I guess?
It means that they are providing us the same pricing that they provided the University of Minnesota on a state contract.
Ah, that's what I was curious about, whether it's part of the state, okay, thank you, good clarification, good to know.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Vollmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.8, salary increases for the mayor and city council, I would note, under our city charter, the salaries must be increased before... city charter, the salaries must be increased before a general election. It was not brought up during the budget hearings, so we're bringing this up now so that you can discuss if you wish to have any increases for 2021 or 22. Now would be the time to direct staff to put that ordinance together.
Mayor? George?
Yeah, I guess since I voted nay on the budget this evening, I will motion to maintain the current salaries that we have.
Councilmember Scholmeyer second.
We all second.
Okay, I think I heard George make the motion, and Eileen seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I think, as Eileen mentioned, and Michelle was chiming in, we're really not overly paid, to be sure. But in these times, this is where leadership counts, and I think it's important to show some of it here. And I'm happy to keep my compensation the same over the next two years, if so, reelected.
All right. Any other discussion? Not will move to vote by roll call.
Councilmember Thirley with a quick comment, if I might.
Go ahead, Al.
You know, just historic perspective here, we don't know what the future is going to bring. And in the past, when the revenues have changed for our city, we on the council have taken salary reductions. I think councilperson Borzakowski recalls that time when we each took a reduction in our salary to help everybody out, you know, and I think this is a good move for this council going ahead to the future years. Thank you.
Okay. Move to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.9, report on the assessment role for the 2020 Sioux Street reconstruction, and to set the public hearing for October 19.
George moves to set that hearing date.
Eileen seconds.
Motion by George, seconded by Eileen. Discussion. Hearing done, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.10 is the resolution ordering assessment of cost for the 2020 sidewalk replacement project.
George moves to approve the assessments, approve the attached resolution for the assessments.
Scholmeyer second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
carries.
Item 5.11, the report on the assessment role for the 2020 sidewalk project, and set the public hearing for Monday, October 19.
George moves to approve the set to hearing date.
Scholmeyer second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing done, vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden. Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.12 is the resolution ordering assessment of cost for the 2020 miscellaneous utilities.
Councilmember Scholmeyer moved to approve the attached resolution.
George will second that.
Seconded by Paul, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander. Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
carries.
Item 5.13, report on assessment role for the 2020 miscellaneous utilities, and to set the public hearing for Monday, October 19.
George moves to approve the attached resolution to set the hearing date.
Scholmeyer second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing done, vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander. Ayden.
Hi.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
carries.
Item 5.14 is the city hall roof leak.
George moves to motion to approve the facility fund transfer of up to $23,000 to the building maintenance account.
Michelle.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion.
Councilmember Thirley with a comment.
Go ahead, Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Our council packet talks about a roof drain leak, which has damaged some floors in city hall. And the comment was that the roof area of the drain had been previously fixed, but there's been more damage done. And I'm just wondering if, how long ago it was repaired, and if there was any recourse from, or the city would have to work with the person who, or the contractor who previously fixed it without apparently fixing it all the way, is the comment.
Chad is on, Hubel's on the line, and he'll answer that question.
Mayor and council, that previous leak dates back at least 15 years.
Okay, I mean, that's what I thought, that it was a long time ago. But, you know, you had to ask the question. I'm sure you would have taken care of it if it had been. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I think we can vote.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Paul.
Paul.
Hi.
carries.
Item 5.15 is the Bud King roof leak and security projects.
I am, Michelle, would make a motion to transfer $19,900 from the facility fund or up to that amount to the recreation fund to complete the Bud King roof repair and security enhancements.
George will second that.
All right, a motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Sorry, hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
All right, we'll start with Paul.
You know, I do want to say thanks to the Fine Arts Commission, and, you know, this is another example of our strong arts and culture work here in Winona. We have art of the word, art of the hand, art of the cloth, and art of the song being given awards this evening. And, you know, I just want to congratulate all the recipients and good work by the Fine Arts Commission and staff, and making that happen, and showing the quality and the work that we have here in our community. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Michelle?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, George.
Chief Bostrock, if you are listening yet, I just wanted to simply say thank you for your years of service. It's been an honor to have worked with you over the past 20 years in all of your roles with the police department. You've done a fine job. And like you say, I know there's many times I've talked with you on the phone, met with you at different places, met in your office, and you have helped take care of many, many situations that have come up. And thank you, and enjoy your retirement. Well deserved.
Okay, thank you, George. Pam?
Yes, I would like to reiterate what Paul Scholmeyer said about the arts, the arts awards tonight. I look forward to seeing and hearing more from all of these artists as time goes on. And congratulations to everyone. Thank you. I have, I have a comment or a question, perhaps. I have received some comments about broken pedestrian lights at significant crossings in Winona. I understand that some of the streets, of course, that are city streets are our responsibility. Some of them are state responsibility. Who should be called about the broken crossing light at Fifth and Main? And who should be called about Sonia and Franklin? These are significant crossings, and people need to be able to cross on a pedestrian light.
Brian's taking various notes, so consider, Brian will look in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone in the public, they should contact the city directly.
Thank you.
And Eileen?
I just want to also echo the sentiments about our arts community and congratulate our Fine Arts Commission award winners. And to that end, to thank everyone who participated this past week in input sessions with the Cultural Arts Planning Group. There is a public survey that's open to, that we want everyone in the community to participate in, whether or not you consider yourself a quote unquote artist or creative person. And I believe that should be accessible through the city website, I hope.
I believe the link is on there.
Okay, great. So everyone, please take that. And since we're talking about stop signs, could we look at Fourth and Grand, since we put some stops, are putting some stop signs in that area? Fourth and Grand is really, is uncontrolled still, and it's pretty dangerous at times. And there's a couple businesses over there, and residential homes too. So if there's any way we could look at that, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item tonight. I was contacted by a constituent about their concerns on Lake Boulevard, just east of Clark's Lane, next to one of our city parks. Apparently, there is quite a bit of natural spring activity in that hillside area. And they've noticed, and I have noticed too, because I drive in that area a lot, and I'm sure others have, the amount of water that accumulates on Lake Boulevard, that'd be West Lake Boulevard, over time, and it just is, in most times of the year, just a water hazard, but still a hazard nonetheless, that catches people by surprise because it's kind of hard to see sometimes. But in the wintertime, it's been much more of a hazard because that water will freeze on the road and create slippery conditions, no matter how often that road is plowed. I know the city has known about this, has tried to deal with it. And I think, as I told the constituent, I'll bring it up again to see if that plan to minimize the amount of water on that road and eliminate that hazard will continue between now and the time we get some cold weather, which, you know, in this particular time of the year is sooner rather than later. So that's all my comments tonight on council concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Al.
That brings us to the consent agenda. There are seven items, the approval of the minutes from September 8th, two ordinances, one for handicap parking on Lincoln Street, the second for handicap parking on Liberty Street, three claims by the city for damage to city light poles and a bus bench, and a claim against the city by Dan Amundson.
Councilman Thirley here, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Michelle Alexander, I second.
By Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
George.
I could read his lips. He was good.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Mayor, if there is no objection, I move we adjourn.
I move we second that. I mean, I second that.
Seconded by Michelle. Vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Thirley.
Hi.
Mohler.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Return. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.